Okay, it's 6:45. Meeting will come to order. First up, first up on our agenda is roll call. We're all here. Yay. Approval of city council agenda.
Can I pull out? Number seven of city business. I've been chatting with a bunch of different organizations as of today and they're, they haven't gotten the information back yet.
Sure. Anything else? Ellen, did you want to add that under "I"? Just amend.
Yeah, if you could.
Do you want to say it?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilor, earlier today, we did get a call. This is in relation to letter "I" under the consent agenda. You've already got it teed up to authorize some payments to henshins and S and M henshins. They're doing a bunch of the lift station work pursuant to contract. They've put in a couple of pay applications, number four and five. And so the total under that line item that they're requesting is 156, 497, and 46 cents. So that's the actual number we're approving on the already lettered item. Just FYI.
And then, is this the time that we're talking about the consent agenda? If we want to pull something out?
Well, we're now approving the agenda. So this is just a number to go with that lettered item. So once the agenda is set, you can then, once we get to the consent, pull whatever you need.
Thank you.
And that's all I would amend that with.
Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda with those two amendments?
Well, second, Hankins?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We'll move on to the public forum. Would you like to speak, Mr. Granick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilor, good evening. Terry Granick, I live at 363 Lakewood Lane. I'm here on behalf of Jessica, my wife, who I think most of you know from the Lake Links Committee as well, and myself. Just wanted to raise concern, I actually stopped in and saw Teresa in the office yesterday, and she suggested this would be a good kind of starting point. I will follow up with more detail and more details about the situation, but raised concerns about a tree. I live on Lakewood Lane, so if you're unfamiliar, start at the hockey rink and you're coming up and go up the hill right to the right, there's a very steep road that goes up. On the end of that road, actually across the street from my house, so it's officially, I understand, on both city property and 369 Wildwood Drive property. And the backside essentially of that property is a very large cottonwood tree that has been essentially halved by the property owner at this point. Everything over his property was taken down. And it now, if you take a look at it, it's best to go there and look at it. It is very precariously. If it goes down, it will fall on my house, property, family, and I am very concerned on that. He's also been digging maybe level or something, but bottom line is like, I'm concerned about the root system. I'm concerned about multiple things. I've had two independent arborists who were coming to do other work at my house, unsolicited, raised concern as they came up the road about this tree. One was actually Woodchuck, who is, I think, on your agenda later this evening. So I have been concerned about it for a while, and I have pictures. I'll send these via email. John Lund looked at it when he was doing Emerald Ashboro, so this may be a year ago-ish. And also, that, I did ask him because he was out there, and I'm like, hey, can you look at this? And he was tagging trees, but he expressed concern with it. So my concern and kind of where I'd like to get to is I'll share this information. It's not on my property, it's across the street from my property. My understanding is that the property line actually divides the tree. So I'd like to try to just raise a safety concern. It is a big safety concern, I think you'd agree if you took a look at it. And then just following up with how we can, you know, mutually address the concern.
So just so I understand, the tree was removed on private property and the remainder of the tree is on public property?
That's, well, the trunk is, I think, right down the middle.
Yeah.
He went out for the first, like, large branches that broke, like, that branch off and split off. So if you look at the tree, it's literally half the tree and it's half this way, and it's...
So the trunk is in place, it was just kind of, the upper part of it was cut back so that it doesn't balance well now?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
Fifty percent of the tree is gone. The trunk is in place to the top, like...
Okay. And it's split between like Danny's property and city property as far as you're aware of the property?
That's my understanding, that's what he has claimed, explained in the past. And actually, I think, you know, there was a survey done, and it did appear to me it splits.
It sounds like something that we should look at.
Yeah, so how would we access that tree? What's the best?
So that's also, Woodchuck had indicated it would be best. So if you want to access it to look at it, come up Lakewood Lane. It's at the top on your left-hand side.
Okay.
If you want to access it to do tree work on it, there's power lines, it would come down across power lines into my house and property. So Woodchuck did indicate that it would be probably preferential if they had access from the other property owner to deal with the remainder of the tree.
Okay, we'll come take a look at it.
Were you saying power lines go through it?
No, not go through it.
It would fall on them?
It would come down across it. I actually thought to write a little bit, and they're like, we only work 10, 10 feet within power lines as well. So I, I don't know that it would be a right pre-service issue, at least, but I don't know. I haven't yet looked at it specifically. I was here yesterday, and there was a guy in the parking lot, and I talked to him because I came to talk to Teresa, and I was like, hey, what, what do you think about this? And he's like, well, we're only contracted within like 10 feet of power lines.
All right, I'll run out and take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Alan Mitchell, I'm on the Parks Committee. And you have on your agenda today one item that the Parks Committee has brought to you, and that's the proposed amendments to Chapter 804, which is the provision of the code that creates the special revenue fund. So I appreciate the opportunity to address you here, and I'll be very brief. You remember back in April, you passed a resolution and you directed the Parks Committee to monitor the funds that are in the special revenue fund, which are primarily the dock fees, and to prepare an action plan and a budget for 2026. So we're meeting next Tuesday, and that's our plan to get that together, so you'll have it for the December meeting. And somebody from the Parks Committee can come here again in December regarding that. But one of the things that came to our attention is that the ordinance provisions regulating the spending of money from the special revenue fund could use some updating and some clarification. So we put together some proposed language to do that. And you have in your packet an explanation of all the changes we proposed. They're not controversial, they're not substantial, they're updating, they're clarifications. So really, all you have to do tonight is just pass a motion to say, yeah, we're going to propose some amendments to Chapter 804. Schedule a public hearing for next week, or next month, I mean, as is required under your rules of procedure. And then if you're happy with the amendments, hold a public hearing, see if anybody comments, take those into account, and then pass a resolution and publish notice. And as I said, in December, we are hoping to have an action plan and a budget for 2026.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Have a good meeting.
Happy Friday.
Right. Barton, would you like to?
Barton Winter, 15 Oaks Lane. And I've been doing quite a bit of work on the rink and replacing boards. And earlier in the summer, we were replacing the perimeter posts. And so, you know, I think, you know, there's obviously more that could be done, but one of the things that's come to my attention is our new netting setup on sort of the west end of the rink. And what I've commented on is that I was a little concerned about the bolting in of the, one, the existing structural posts that hold up the chain link fence, two, new posts that came off the backstop. So that's one, one thing, you know, I would like to see some banding to hold, let's say, the two posts, the primary posts that are around the entrance, hold them together and sort of take some of the stress off the bolted connection. The other thing that I'm concerned about at the rink, okay, there's, we don't have zip ties or any ties on the center portion of the netting that goes under or above the opening. And I don't know if they plan on doing that, but we should. I mean, it could be that it's being left because it's inconvenient if something tall needs to go in, but that shouldn't be our main concern. You know, that's where we want, we want the pucks to be stopped there. And I'm also concerned about, we have uncapped posts, and specifically on the far end away from the warming house, these are the two-inch diameter posts that support the chain link fence, and they're pretty thin walled. And we've got at least eight of those posts that have burst. And I believe, I was told in consultation with some fencing companies, that that's a result of water getting into the pipe and then freezing and expanding. So a lot of those posts there, most of them don't have a cap on them, right? So I would say we need to put caps on, you know, ultimately block the water from getting down into the tube. And on the other end, the new setup, we've got the taller posts, which are thicker walled, and, you know, I guess they're not as much of a concern to burst if they get water in them, but why tempt fate? So I'm asking that we designate Jim and Ron, or me, or somebody to cap these posts with the... Caps are not expensive at all. And it was told to me that possibly we could drill like four 90-degree screws in to hold the caps on because they get shocked, you know, when the puck hits the fence.
We can talk to Jim and Ron about that.
Okay. So, yeah, that's, that's basically my concern. I, you know, also, here's what I've been saying, you know, for the last few years. I said, yeah, I would like to have some autonomy to flood. And, you know, because that's where the key thing that I've complained about is we're going too slow, our buildup is too slow, we get going too late, and...
Excuse me one moment, did you want to speak about that?
I did. I think that's a good idea. So my thought is that once the weather gets cold enough, we'll alert you as to when you can start flooding, but we'll let you try it.
Really?
One and done, how about that?
Oh, yeah, that's, no, I don't want to compete with Jim.
No, we, I think we have...
I want to work in concert with him, and so hopefully he would...
Yep, so we have you do it, and then in the event that, well, we'll have to set some, some rules in general, and probably a little bit of training as far as...
We'll have a meeting with you.
The flooding, and, yep.
Yeah, we need to, you know, I mean, he's, he has given me training on it, like 2020.
And then we'll have to have you sign the waiver as well.
Okay.
But we'll set up a meeting, okay?
Okay, that, you know, that's great. That sounds good, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Barton.
Thanks, Barton.
Thanks for all your work on the rink, too, it looks great.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
I'm happy to do it, it seems like it takes a long time.
Yeah.
But right now I've got some time and I'm finishing up.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate that.
Maybe I'm going to finish this last corner in spring.
Okay.
Anyway, but...
Thank you.
Good.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Jensen?
I was going to sit this one out. I'm Ruth Jensen, is this on?
I believe it is.
Just tap on it, see. Yep, you're on.
701 Hall Avenue. And I'm here to talk about Hall's Marsh. And I am assuming that the council's objectives are to restore and maintain Hall's Marsh while preserving Birchwood's property rights and keeping the budget down. So I think that Rice Creek's proposed agreement opposes these objectives. We've all heard of putting the cart before the horse. I think Rice Creek's agreement is full of carts that are way, way down the road with no horse anywhere in sight. That missing horse in this scenario is easements. Rice Creek Waterset District has no easements to use Birchwood property, and their agreement is a distraction from that basic fact. Birchwood should not take this next step of signing the agreement drafted by Rice Creek in its own favor until it takes the first step of requiring Rice Creek to get the legally necessary easements to use Birchwood's property, including all of Hall's Marsh. We know you're all tired of talking about this and anxious to settle the problem as quickly and cheaply as possible, but I think it's important to realize that Rice Creek first proposed this agreement on June 1st, 2022, after Birchwood's resolution in October of 2021, and after Ellen's letter, March 1st, to Rice Creek of 2022, both of which directed Rice Creek to clean up the marsh and stop using Hall's Marsh for untreated pre-B runoff. That's when they came up with this agreement. But in three and a half years, Rice Creek still accepts responsibility only for the outfall sediment and denies responsibility for the length of Hall's Marsh. I think it's time for Birchwood to reject the whole idea of this cumbersome agreement. It contains falsehoods that support Rice Creek's position and weaken Birchwood's. And really, the only relevant parties for Hall's Marsh are Rice Creek and Birchwood. The strongest protection Birchwood can get for the marsh are easements that include legal description of the property plus maintenance terms that don't depend on what another municipality does or does not do. Even if all of Birchwood's amendments are accepted by Rice Creek, the agreement takes away Birchwood rights by requiring it to give access without easements. Easements would specify the legal description, maintenance and cost-sharing terms, the intentions of the parties, and dispute resolution. Those are important protections for Birchwood property rights. Rice Creek has known since its original engineer's reports in 1978 that easements were required and that they did not get them. The agreement also requires giving up the right to claim damages and requires agreement that the PLOP is two separate projects, thus excluding the marsh, and that it's not a stormwater project subject to MPCA regulation. So here's what we think Birchwood can do instead of signing that agreement. First, of course, they inform Rice Creek that they're not going to participate in this maintenance and operations agreement because it is adverse to Birchwood's legal rights. Then they inform Rice Creek that Rice Creek has to negotiate for the legally required easements with maintenance terms to use Birchwood land for the PLOP. And that includes the land over the piping that comes down. And Rice Creek has to cover all the legal costs for drafting and recording those easements. Attachment one has documentary support for Birchwood's position, and there is no cost presenting these facts to Rice Creek and requiring them to do what the law requires. If Rice Creek refuses to negotiate the easements with cleanup and maintenance terms, Birchwood can petition the Board of Soil and Water Resources to compel Rice Creek to get the easements. And then further along, they could investigate filing court actions to compel Rice Creek to get the easements and possibly to pay damages and legal fees if that were allowed. As far as I know, Birchwood has not asked the White Bear Lake Conservation District or the Washington County Conservation District or the Washington County Commissioner for help and support in demanding that Rice Creek accept legal responsibility for Hall's Marsh as a district facility that is always and an integral part of the Pre-B Lake Outfall Project. The PLOP has degraded Hall's Marsh, a public water wetland that's hydrologically connected to and drains into White Bear Lake at a fish spawning area. So I think they might have some concerns, too. Then we can, or simultaneously, petition the DNR to get Pre-B Lake off the public water inventory. Pre-B was listed on that due to a known error, a flyover mistake. And Rice Creek knows it, they're fully aware of it. And first, last, and always, it's stormwater going into Pre-B, stormwater going out. But in March, because of this technicality that Pre-B is a public water lake, Rice Creek successfully petitioned to be removed from the requirement that the PLOP is removed from the requirement for an MS4, you know, the storm sewer separate thing, because they don't regulate transfers between public waters. And, but Minnesota Statute 103G 201 says the Commissioner can revise the public water inventory map as needed to correct errors in the original inventory. I think we should ask him to do that. And then we can ask the MPCA to rescind the cancellation of Rice Creek's need for an MS4 permit. It's clear that Rice Creek is using a known error to circumvent the intent of Minnesota water law. And then finally, and least favorite, would be to investigate asking for declaratory judgment on the rights and obligations of both parties, specifically on Rice Creek's use of Birchwood's land without a legal easement. Then followed with, or combined with, a request for a summary judgment compelling them to get the easements, to negotiate those easements. And another thing that you could look into, since Rice Creek is physically occupying and using the city land without an easement, this could be conceivably a trespass. And the city could seek damages from them for the unauthorized entry and use of the property. Then I just wanted to say about the attachments, some facts and law. This is just some of the evidence that's available about Rice Creek always intending to use Hall's Marsh for water treatment, starting with the first engineer's report in 1978, and that it was always one project to get the water out of Pre-B and into White Bear Lake. I'm just going to say that like on the first page, under facts, A1B, is the quote, "Permanent easements for drainage purposes will be required along the entire length of the outfall. And then a drainage easement through the Hall Marsh will also have to be acquired." And at the bottom of the first page is a quote from the final engineer's report in 1979, and it says, "The new location of the storm sewer outfall will provide assurance of the complete utilization of Hall's Marsh as a wetland treatment facility for the stormwater discharge prior to its entry into White Bear Lake." I think that's pretty definitive. And then there's the questions about easement law. And it's interesting, this is at the top of page three, that despite how old this project was, Rice Creek had to get in... easement from Dale Johnson when it replaced the outlet into White Bear Lake in 2017. And then it also acquired easements from the property owners around Preby when it replaced the outlet structure there in 2022. And Rice Creek policy requires the district to get easements for all their facilities, but they've never acquired any from Birchwood. A petition for a drainage project does not grant easements, and allowing usage even for years and years doesn't grant easements over municipal land because for municipal land, prescriptive those kind of usage easements are specifically forbidden by Minnesota Statute 541.01. And permission can be given, and it can be withdrawn, and it's very reasonable, I think, for Birchwood after discovering a polluted sediment that requires removal to an industrial site to require Rice Creek to get the necessary legal easements with maintenance terms now. Then Attachment two is important because it shows that Rice Creek knows the water coming out of Preby is stormwater. They have known it at least since 2021, but they knew it before that, but at that board meeting, they talked about it and how it was mistakenly identified as a lake. And I think Rice Creek wants to use the fact that Preby is a lake and that there isn't going to be any MPCA oversight just to help them do a drawdown over any objections Birchwood might have because, you know, it's just a transfer from one lake to another public water body. So I think it would be important for Birchwood to petition the DNR to get it off, to get Preby off the public water inventory. And then, that's it. And I have lots of answers. I hope you guys have some questions.
Well, I will mention that we have talked to Stan, and we have talked to Washington Conservation District.
Oh, good.
And Minnesota pollution, yeah. So we are awaiting more responses from those groups, but we'll see what comes up of it. That's why I took it off the agenda for tonight is because we're awaiting some additional information, so.
Okay. I don't have any questions yet. I need to digest all of this, but thank you for putting all this together. This is a lot of work, a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We have. In Birchwood for a long time, I'd really like to see all of Birchwood get to enjoy the marsh with a walkway or just more shore access or something.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys doing all of this for us. Thank you. Did any of you guys have questions?
No.
Okay. Thanks for coming. Seeing no one else to speak at the public forum, public forum is closed. We did the presentations, and we're moving on to the consent agenda. Bridgette, did you have something you wanted to pull from that?
Yeah, just a couple of, I'd like to talk about the wood check work in Polly's Park and then the paid leave.
Okay.
And then I just have a question about the balance sheet.
Hold on.
Sorry.
What letters?
So it's G, it's L, and then a question about M.
Okay. G, L, and M?
You should try to spell something.
That's like glam, but anyway. Never mind. Okay, so can we?
I want to pull out C.
Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda after the removal of G, L, and M?
And C, please.
And C.
So moved with the removal of G, L, M, and C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Can I clarify something quick on that, though?
Sure.
I think we left in I, yes? That was for the revised amount. Okay. Just to make sure. That was all.
Are we getting reimbursements again? I don't want to, and let's just not remark on my remarks. It's all Friday and a long night.
Okay, so I'm going to add this GL, well, let's go in alphabetical order, C, G, L, and M. I can't do it after number eight on City Business there. Okay, let's move on to staff reports, then. Marcus couldn't be here this evening, but in your packet, you will see on page 71.
Do we want to adopt the consent agenda?
I thought we did that.
We did. I had a clarifying question afterwards, sorry. I just wanted to make sure that the amount we approved was actually the amount we approved and that we don't have to come back later.
So if you look on page 71 of your agenda packet, there's a map, and the highlighted streets on the map show where the crack and seal project will occur in 2026. We need approval on this tonight because it goes to Washington County, and we're going to go through Washington County to have it done, and they need to get us on their calendar. And in order to do that, they need to know in December if we are going to go in with them, you know, to get this project completed. So the expected cost, if you see on the side, is $22,000.
I'm not finding that map.
Page 71.
Okay, so there's two packets. It's not on page 71 of either.
It's right here.
That one?
Okay. Page 71. I don't know what to tell you about it.
It says page 71 at the bottom of the page, not page 71 in the PDF.
Oh, okay, hold on. Now I saw the map.
Because it?
Oh, because there's two. I got you, sorry. Okay. Anyway, do you have any questions about the project and/or the amount or anything? So it's part of our 2026 Road Improvement Plan, which Marcus is working up two different scenarios, and that will be presented in December with the council, probably at our workshop if we agree to do that. But this part we need to pass first because, like I said, the deadline is coming up if we want to have that done.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the crack seal project for $22,000?
So moved, Kathy.
Second?
Second.
Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Going on to number two, engineer's report on drainage improvements in Polly's Park. Put in, I don't know how this is working in your packets, but it's page 72. He put in a map of all the improvements. Did anybody have any questions on that? We know we're getting all funding through Rice Creek.
Rice Creek Watershed. Is that for the Polly's Park one?
Oh, Polly's Park, I am so sorry. Yeah, Polly's Park. No, this one, okay, sorry.
They're applying for a grant, it looks like.
You're right, yep, yep. Sorry about that. So Polly's Park, if you have walked down there, you will have noticed all the erosion. The water just like runs straight down Birchwood Avenue into the park, causing like riv- just rivulets.
Yeah.
Well, it used to be a pond.
You could do it.
Yeah, it used to be a pond, and then they drained it and put that drainage in there.
Well, that's, that's, we're talking about the water runoff.
Yeah, that's why it all goes down there is because it's.
That's, I mean, whatever, it's still a catch basin down there. So this would also be a potential part of the 2026 road plan. Marcus and I met with some people from Rice Creek. We have to have a pre-meeting before you apply for that stormwater grant. So this would be the project if we were to get the grant. It would take care of all that. The water just rushes down, and it erodes everything, the street, the sides of the road, and so you'll see the different parts of the project that would be done, and there would be a rain garden or retention pond. Yes, that is the south side of Polly's Park, which would catch all that water running in. And with curbing, we could direct the water better. So anyway, that's something Marcus and I have been talking about with Rice Creek. The action item that goes with that is number two, and that is on page 73. Marcus estimates it would cost about $12,000 for him to work up, do the soil borings, infiltrator tests, surveys, hydraulic modeling, feasibility report. So to work up the information in order to apply for the grant would be $12,000. The grant would be a $60,000 grant, $30,000. It's a 50/50 grant, so Birchwood would come up with 30. Again, all this money would be coming out of the road improvement project because it would be rolled in for the roads planned for next year.
I just have a couple of comments. One, do we have an overall plan for Polly's Park? Do we know what we want Polly's Park to be?
I know what the Parks Committee had planned on doing once they were done with Ty Schmidt, which was, there's a lot of dead trees there that tree removal was part of that. We were hoping to grind all the stumps at the same time so that we could replant because we can't apply for the relief grant and the other DNR grants because we are too wealthy of a community as far as our, the people who live here are above a certain poverty level, basically, and this year they've only allowed income levels to dictate the first come portion of that, and there's never been that grant where it rolls over. So that's why we have not applied for the relief because we are very unlikely to get it. But in the event it, next year has one where you can plant again, removing all those tree stumps that would be detrimental to planting would have been the plan for the Parks Committee, and then putting in a boardwalk through there because of the steep grade gravel ends up just washing down into this retention pond or along the route. And then same issue with like wood chips and things like that, it just ends up being washed down because of the steep angle. So they were hoping to do a boardwalk or something through there to make that a little nicer, and then the educational placards, et cetera, that it used to have would be restored with all the new trees. So that was the plan that the Parks Committee had planned on doing once Ty Schmidt was done, so, or the current project in Ty Schmidt was done because they were thinking about Polly, and then easements was the next one. And so anything that's washing away is what they were aiming for after that.
It's just I think it would be helpful to have sort of the overall picture of what we want this piece of land to be. And then the other, the other thing that comes to mind is sort of the cautionary tale of what we've run into with Ty Schmidt, which was that it was a marsh, and it was a wetland, and we've been fighting it and fighting it and fighting it, and it seems like that's what we're saying about this one, too.
Yeah, it was, as he mentioned, it was previously a pond and then was drained for the purpose of.
So it's going to go back to having a pond in it, rain garden, retention pond, to catch all that stormwater? And then perhaps we won't need a walkway because it won't be rushed, it won't be run out, you know?
Well, I think it's the grade, like the steepness of it that's causing a little bit of the issue, but depending on where that rain garden is, yeah, possibly.
So anyway, I don't know, what do you think about this grant, applying for it?
I guess what I, I don't disagree with Bridgette. The question I would ask is, don't we need to do this anyway?
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
It's destroying the road. I mean, so it's, it's going to come out of our pocket.
Yeah.
Or we can get 30,000 potentially from Rice Creek to help us do the project. That's the way I'm looking at it because either way, if you take a look at that section of road where the water just rushes down, both sides of the road are totally destroyed.
It's really bad.
So we're going to have to do it one way or the other.
Okay.
And if we can capture the water, like direct it to a certain place in Polly's Park, that'll keep the whole path from flooding and getting muddy, so hopefully.
So I guess this goes back to the maintenance thing. Like when I look at Polly's Park, I mean, I run through it every day. Like, and it rains, the water's supposed to drain because there's a giant drain there that gets full of crap, and no one cleans out. So it's like, like who's taking care of it now? How do we get it? I know we put money aside for maintenance, like that needs to be part of the.
That needs to go on a list for next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Just like those, whatever we're uncovering along the sides of the road.
I mean, that's the thing, that's the thing, like you start digging, and you're like, okay, well, there's all this, all this stormwater management that we have that's just covered in dirt.
That's right. It's not functioning because it's not maintained.
Yeah, so it's like.
Needs to be vacuumed out, et cetera.
Well, it needs to be shoveled.
Shoved out at this point, yeah.
It's buried.
Yeah.
I was shoveling again down there.
Were you?
On white pine and.
Oh, jeez.
But Ryan ran by, and he found this pipe, there's a corrugated pipe that was, I don't know, hidden.
Hidden under leaves and vines and.
I mean, it was just, we have some sort of stormwater structure out there. It's just all covered.
It's been neglected for a very long time.
How far was I digging back from the road?
Three feet.
Yeah, three feet of asphalt, and it was like this.
Oh, my gosh.
So, I mean.
So our roads are actually significantly wider than you'd think.
They are, surprisingly larger than you would think.
Yeah, I was actually digging a long haul there by the Rado path.
Yeah.
But anyway, we digress. So anyway, we're going to have to take care of this stormwater management anyway, one way or the other, so we can try to get this grant and get 30,000 from them, or we pay.
I mean, I guess the way I'm squaring this in my head is saying that this is just, it is destroying that road down there. Like it is, it tatters right now, and so it's like, I think you're right, this is part of the roads project.
I think Washington Conservation District also will do the rain gardens for free as well, so if we get Marcus to do the plans, potentially that, that location, and then also on Wildwood where there's always that huge puddle whenever it rains, it's just a little ways down from my house.
Yes.
Those would be two good locations that potentially could use some water diversion to start draining them and getting them off the road in both locations because potholes are going to farm, so.
Right.
So even if we don't get Rice Creek to pay for it, it would be probably good to have the engineering figure it out ahead of time when it's time to do that road.
And so like these things are strictly for the grant and required by the grant, because I look at this, and I'm like, this seems like an astronomical amount for these things.
I know. That's what, we had to have a pre-meeting before we fill out the pre-paperwork, like before we even get to the grant. So you have to have the meeting, then you have to fill out the preliminary paperwork, and then after they approve your preliminary paperwork, then you can apply for the grant. But this is all necessary for the preliminary paperwork.
I get what, survey to shoot existing conditions, like I don't even know what that means.
I'm not an engineer.
Marcus, where are you, Marcus?
It's just a topographic.
Is that what that means?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I probably would have put it in human speak, but that's what it means.
What would you like to do with this?
I say we have Marcus, since we still have some money left over from the project that we had, we have Marcus do this. I say we have Marcus, since we still have some money left over from the project that we had, we have Marcus do this. And then if nothing else, we have it all recorded and ready to go for when we get to that portion of the road anyway.
I mean, this is a hard and fast twelve thousand bucks or can we negotiate a little bit?
He always.
Generally at an hourly rate and then.
It's, yeah.
Multiplied a little bit. He generally comes in lower.
He does.
Cause I'll dig the holes and bring him the dirt.
Nice. All right, then can I get a motion to approve the twelve thousand for the grant work?
So moved, Kathy.
Second?
Second.
Ryan? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. So on to city business. Oh, I'm sorry, page seventy-four shows.
By my math, we're on number three, which is the Parks Amendment.
Yeah, I'm just saying that on page seventy-four, there's more for that street maintenance. So, yeah, so we're on to number three. Discussion of Parks Committee Request to Amend City Code. Anybody have any discussion on this?
The only thing is, it's. It looks like there's a bunch of markup here. Oh.
Yeah, he did a markup version and then he did a clean version.
Which is nice. Um, what do we have to do to get this into like an act? I don't think it's a problem to do a first reading on this, but let's just plan to get this into like an ordinance format for next. Are you able to help with that, Alan, to put the?
That's what I'll be doing, yeah. So depending on, if you guys approve this and we call it a first reading. We would have the final one come back and have a public hearing in December and presumably pass it and I know I heard Al, just like you did. It won't be a resolution, it'll be an ordinance.
I think he was, might have been referring to the summary publication.
I don't know.
I don't know either, but.
Resolution and you're done, but we need to pass second reading of the ordinance and that'll be it.
Yep, we'll just do it. I just.
This is short enough, I'm not sure if it would benefit from a summary.
Uh, we'll figure it out. Okay, just so long as, as we are all on the same page of.
Yeah, I think he did a nice job.
He did.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think this is about as spoon fed as you can get from something.
So what would you, what kind of action do we need to take on this tonight?
I think I would just move to call this the first reading of the ordinance as it's presented in your packet with the strikeouts. Basically, literally as presented and direct staff to come back with the final version of it for second reading and order a public hearing.
What do you said?
I moved to pass, oh. I moved to pass as a first reading the proposed amendments to section eight oh four, Park Special Revenue Fund.
Second.
And order a public hearing.
And order a public hearing.
Okay, then I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. So you're all set with that, Alan? Do you need any of us to do anything with regards to that?
No.
If I do, I'll ask and frankly, I can just call Al. I mean, it wouldn't be questions for you guys.
Okay. I'm on to number four, which is discussion and possible authorization for seasonal road management, snow management. Um, Alan did a lot of work on this. Yep, so you, can you explain it?
I can take a stab at that. Mayor and council, of course, we met on, I think it was the twenty-eighth of October. Talked a little bit about the snow management season and you saw somewhere in my materials. That you're really buying insurance to make sure the snow goes away when you get it. So as hard as it is to decide what, what the season might bring for the snow company, it's even harder for you guys to decide what to bite on. And so you made certain requests about what to ask the, the, the company and Birch and Bright View are good company. And so they maintain a lot of people to make sure if we get a lot of snow, they're ready and if they have minimal snow, somehow they keep these people busy. And anticipating more snow. So the quote that you see there. Well, my memo was kind of teed that up to talk about what would happen if we actually moved to a two-inch trigger. And of course, the trigger is when they will actually come out. The initial quote that you guys saw. Which was a little eye-watering when you think about what it's gonna cost, but at one inch, of course, you've got. Trucks and people deployed at what most people wouldn't even shovel their sidewalks over, so that seems a little bit excessive. And talking with the people at the snow company, they said that there are people in Birchwood who will call them and even ask for a service when there's less than that. But of course, you have to be physically responsible and think about, you know, what's reasonable in terms of value. And so that's why we have this quote for two inches, which is still not that much snow, but certainly when it gets packed down. It can create a problem later on in the winter and so it makes sense to use that as a trigger. It just really does. And it changes what you see. Based on the average that at least we used for kind of teasing out what it would look like for the season. It is reasonable to assume that we'll get to a tier five, which is, you know, basically right down the middle in terms of average. But you can also see what that actually does to your bid. You know, the initial quote at one inch, if you're at tier one, was like fifty-three thousand. And so now with a two-inch trigger, you're at basically probably all the snow that we're gonna get. For just a hair over what that initial tier one was with a one-inch trigger. And so the recommendation from staff, at least from my perspective, would be to authorize that. Basically, the contract as bid with a two-inch trigger. And so we go from there and those increment payments will start in December. And certainly it'll start at tier one and just move forward. And if we don't get that much snow, then that's where we stay. So.
Was it one inch last year or was it two inches last year?
It was one inch, apparently.
I, I do have seen Bright View come through when.
There's barely anything.
Barely anything, yeah. I mean.
Plus, you know, I asked them not to plow down to bare pavement. That just destroys the asphalt that we're putting down, so. Even at two inches, they would be plowing like an inch and a half.
If you took out a lot of curbs last year.
We have a plan for that.
I'm, I'm assuming that they, when they're mentioning people calling to request service. They're only coming out if it's someone who has a purse string, right? Not like. Me? Well, I, I'm a council member, so that's different, but I guess like, let's say my neighbor calls in and says, hey, it's really icy. Are they coming out for that?
As in servicing individuals and getting billed?
No, oh, well, if that's, that's what they're doing, fine, but as far as like the.
On behalf of the city.
On behalf of the city, right?
They would, an, an average, your neighbor wouldn't be able to call the city's service and say, get out here and do this.
I'm making sure of, right?
That would be reserved to someone on staff.
Okay, good. So I know occasionally like we get ice that gets on the hills portion and I'd be okay with them coming out insulting that. In the event we had ice, ice, but.
And if we get calls, I mean, we would certainly call that in and they'd send someone out. I mean, they're a big enough group that they'll have folks out. All day during a snow event, so if something's missed or if they need to come back and do some cleanup. You know, that'd be something we'd order if we had someone call in, so pretty typical.
You were really good at that last year and in fact, the Granite sent a nice email about that was good road service that they got last year.
Yeah, they're pros. I mean, they're nationwide, so I mean, they do this all over the place, so they've kind of got it down to a science, which is how they can come up with this. Tiered pricing model in the first place.
So when we're looking at this chart, we're saying it's gonna be approximately fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars for snow removal? Approximately.
Yep, and I would, you know, you can authorize to move with that and if we have to go outside a budget, then we can talk about that. But let's hope that that doesn't happen until March-ish, right?
All right, did you clarify with them as far as? Like we were thinking, I guess in our meeting where it was in, if you. Say in, in March, we hit that forty-nine ninety-nine, the end of that one. So then we had been paying the fifty-five, one thirty. If we get half an inch over and now we're at fifty point one. Do we owe all the rest of that? Between fifty-five and sixty-three, so then we owe sixty-three.
I'm a little disappointed to answer your question by putting an aside in there. I wrote a memo that was supposed to go with this stuff, but I don't see in here.
Okay.
So I don't know what happened to it, but it explained exactly that.
Oh, okay.
Since it's not here, let me explain it again. So let's say we're at this fifty-five thousand dollar tier and let's just drop it to fifty. Cause it makes the math easier. So over five months, the city signs up for this and it pays ten thousand, it's invoiced ten thousand a month. Over the course of the season. And so that assumes a certain level of service. If you go over that and you go to the next level or tier of service, then what they do is they send you a bill. And you're at this new rate and let's say it's seventy thousand. So it's twenty thousand more divided by five months, so that's four thousand a month difference. And so they'll send you a bill for the months prior to that trigger for basically to catch up. And then you pay that new amount for the balance of the, of the term.
So we would be on, on.
So it's odd because of course it's like, well, does it just jump up and now do we pay that annualized for those months? No, you catch up or whatever, so that's the, that's the hard part about this, right? If you have a twenty-four inch Mother's Day blizzard, all of a sudden you can get thrust into a completely different tier. And all of a sudden, all that back stuff is due plus the last month, so, yeah, it's quite painful. If you get to that point and we're signed up for it, I believe. That once we sort of get beyond that forty-nine point nine nine, it would be time and materials at that point.
Okay. Um, in the event we got seventy inches. Is that even a tier or is that, we get it free?
Well, again, it becomes time and materials, so.
Okay.
Ain't nothing free.
I assumed as much, but there wasn't another tier, so I wanted to check.
Yeah, so at that point, I mean, everyone's just happy when anyone shows up.
I would imagine.
Yeah, and now there's problems with where to take snow and things like that.
Well, I, my assumption is that some of this will have melted in the meantime, right? So it's a total cumulative, not like seventy inches is on the ground at this point.
Yeah, and that's, they keep track of that with a modeling service that kind of anonymizes it. So they're not out there with their measuring sticks saying, yay, we made it. So there's a company that does that. It's a subscription model and it's basically. Using Noah and other models to actually say, this is exactly what you got here. As opposed to using the number in, in the airport, for example, for the official number. So when I talked to Matt, who's sort of our salesperson, they've got crews that go out and so they'll actually spot visit to say, hey. You know, because we do have some of these little pockets and it's very possible that Birchwood could get two inches and Oakdale could get one. And so they've got folks out there and if they see that, they'll come out and, and work, so. And if you guys see something, call, email, whatever else and say it looks like we should have some snow service and if we don't, then I can make the call.
Do we get to call you as well if they come out too early?
I would hope that they wouldn't do that, you know.
Did last year, so I'm curious.
Yeah, well, just watch it. So I drive through here too, so chances are if it happened here, it happened in Delwood, so. If I have that much snow and no one comes, then I would probably call in without anyone having to say anything.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve the contract for Bright View at the two-inch trigger for snow removal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
We got under the wire, so I did get a call from Matt and just FYI, if anyone was biting fingernails. I did get the assurances that they would come out, so if we had something happen, they said, just call, we'll assume something's gonna go, so. We were not exposed without service.
Okay, number five, discussion and possible approval for process to allow limited access to public property, licensure. And an update of the city parking code. Who would like to talk about this?
Um, I guess I'm not quite sure. I think the limited license for public property probably should be visited. As part of the item I'm gonna add here. I had written some parking code a long time ago to kind of revise it. One of the problems with our parking code is that. We've kind of long had a policy that people can park on streets, but we've never actually had an ordinance that, overnight. We've never had an ordinance that allowed that. People could get a parking permit and so. This kind of clarifies what is allowed and what's not allowed. It's a lot more specific than the existing ordinance, clarifies winter parking and some things. Now, having said that, I don't know what we want to do with this tonight. I'm happy to, I think there's a bigger picture here, which is. What should we allow to be stored on city property? We have different rules for easements, different rules for parks, different rules for streets. Do we want to consider what should be allowed on private property? What are, you know, what we allow for storage in front yards, for example? And I, I went through and kind of based on what I know about the codes and, and just marked up all these sections that kind of cover this. So I think we have a couple of options tonight. One is, we can pass the parking code and move forward to a second reading. Another option is, I think we might want to just push this into a workshop. And have kind of a council discussion on what we should do with stuff. What should we do with all of our Birchwood stuff? And, and should we do just kind of some broad scale revisions? Because I don't, I don't think what we have works well for us. So, and I don't, you know, this is a long meeting. Are there preferences and if, if we want to have a lot of discussion, let's push that to a workshop. If people think, hey, the parking code is great and a good start and we're not gonna have to revise it again, maybe we pass that. I'm kind of fine with whatever. I'm also fine with, let's just take this under advisement and look at it again in a couple of weeks.
What do you recommend, Ryan?
I think we should probably push it into a workshop and I think people should think, if you don't care, that's fine. But I'm more than happy to go through and revise a whole bunch of ordinances if that's what we want to do. And I think it would be better to do as kind of one all-consuming thing, but you might just think about what your vision is. For whether people should, for example, store trailers in their front yards and what about construction materials? Just think about your vision there. And then let's just push this into a workshop. I think that, that would be probably my recommendation. You know, I think it needs to be fixed. I don't think it's that urgent.
Do you think it needs to be fixed in December? Because picking a meeting or having a workshop in December is gonna be a little bit of a challenge as far as.
Well, I don't know that it needs, I mean, if this sits for a couple of months, that's fine. Otherwise, if people wanna, that's fine. I, I'm not that worried about it.
Don't want to tell people they can't store their boat or whatever in their, on their own property, so I'm of the opinion.
We do currently tell them that.
They can't unless it's in the backyard.
No, no, I know that portion, but I mean, as far as like this states it has to be unobstructed view. If you take into account my property, I don't have any unobstructed view area. I'd have to put up a fence.
So that's, are you, what, what are you looking at here? Are you looking?
Um, just in general, when I was reading the private property portion, that I'm like, this would be tough.
So what I'm hearing, it's a longer discussion, we should push it to workshop, like in January.
No, we have to have a. Okay, so are you saying that you would like to then talk about the twenty twenty-six road plan in January?
I think we have to have a workshop in December.
That's what I'm thinking, because then Marcus, he needs to get on writing contracts and stuff.
Let's just, let's just push this to our next workshop, whether it's December or January. This is not time critical, but the other stuff might be, so I think we can talk about.
That's up to you guys too. Okay, so you want to push it?
Let's, let's push it, yeah. I just, because it sounds like Kathy wants to, and I don't, I think that's great, like let's just start talking about.
Okay.
I do think it's work that should be done, but I don't think it needs to be done December-ish. We could do it.
That's fine. Yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to get it done before, um, spring.
So February, it's two in February.
Well, I don't know about that, but this is before spring. Okay. Are we good then? Just moving this out. Then we move on to the next thing, which is what? Fee schedule? Ryan, you want to talk about that?
So fees, um, there's just a number of provisions to fees. The water changes are incorporated into there. One of the things that we're going, a lot of things are just kind of cost of living increases. Trying to keep the fees associated with the staff were kind of consistent with actually paying for the cost it takes to process them. One area of the fee schedule that's going up a little more significantly is conditional use permits, variances and those, those things. Those are incredibly time-consuming for.
and those, those things, those are incredibly time-consuming for, um, staff to do. And I think we had talked, Jen and I had talked a little bit about an arrangement where we actually make a payment to staff based on processing a variance because of the, because of the work involved there. Um, I think, I think we expect to hash that out, but, uh, it's kind of a, a broad rambling overview. Um, I'm happy to entertain questions.
So Ryan and I just sat down and went through all this together. Um, another change, I guess what prompted it was the rental of this facility. Um, it was twenty-five dollars for twenty-four hours. That doesn't even cover like light swatter, um, having someone come in and clean before and after. So that's kind of what prompted us to look through all of it. And then we needed to update our water and sewer fees anyway for twenty-twenty-six, so.
And we needed to get rid of that chicken license and pig license.
There will be no CDs available for data requests, I'm so sorry. I don't have a CD burner anymore.
Have to bring their own zip drive?
Yeah.
And I, I do think we have to look and double-check the water fees, um, one more time, but we can do that as part of the second reading to make sure we got everything right here.
Okay.
Yeah, you've passed those obviously through the resolution.
Yeah.
We, I pulled out the resolution.
Yeah, we didn't get there yet. We, the.
Oh, that's.
We're passing, we're just gonna skip the resolution because we'll do it here with the fee schedule.
Yeah, that was the other thing that I told Shelley too, so no problem.
Did you match what Shelley had for the fees in here? Okay.
We have the numbers, so we'll just update it in the list.
Okay.
I was surprised to see the boat slip permit fee go up.
The boat slip one? Is that for individuals on their own property or is that through the Dock Association one?
But I don't know if we have to talk to the Dock Association about that first.
We don't.
It's set and collected by Dock Association, Dock Association fees.
Yep, so that is.
Is there a liaison on that one? I don't remember.
Me.
You are?
Why don't you, why don't you talk to him between now and the second reading?
Okay. If it's, if it says set by them, I'd like them to confirm.
They can set whatever they want for the annual boat slip permit fee. They charge a fee higher than the Birchwood fee. We set a fee and then they set a fee higher than that. So there's two fees there, but only one of them is a city fee.
I see.
And the, the addition there is insurance and putting the dogs in and out and so on, so.
Okay. So what's our action on this then for the fee schedule?
Let's pass it as a first reading.
Are all the ones that you actually made changes to marked on here?
There's, there's a new column.
That new column, right?
As the proposed fee, there are a couple of things that are kind of struck, struck through and those will get removed. And then I did make some changes to correct some of the ordinance references, but I didn't really call those out 'cause it's not necessarily germane to the consideration of the ordinance.
Okay, so like the demolition fee, that's one you're changing 'cause it's in the second, that other column, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Ryan made the motion to consider this the first reading?
I moved to consider, to adopt or to pass the fee schedule as a first reading and move and schedule a public hearing next month.
Can we also put some language in that we're gonna touch base with the, on the Dock Committee?
Um, uh, I further moved to direct the mayor to.
Can you direct the mayor?
No, no, I can direct her all I want. I mean, I can direct.
You do all the time, what do you mean?
Can direct my wife too, it doesn't work. I, I, I further m- m- moved to request that the mayor touch base with the Dock Association on the, on the fee increase.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Are we significantly under, um, underwater on our, 'cause we have a lift station replacement fee? Or is that for a?
That's.
Um, capital improvement-esque kind of, okay. Oh, good.
That's what it is, yeah, that's exactly what it is.
It's going into the sewer fee, the sewer fee is going to be.
And that's the one that's on, with the water?
Not sewer fee, the water fee is for.
It's the one she mentioned, okay.
Sometime in the, our future. All right, um, if you like, Outfall, that was struck, right? For number seven, we remove. Number eight is the discussion of the workshop. If you want to wait until January to talk about the, um, twenty-twenty-six road plan, that would be fine. I'm sure Marcus wouldn't mind, he's scrambling to get all that together, but, um, gee, guys. But I would like to have a workshop, if, if we don't do it in December, definitely January.
Is he requiring a workshop to be able to apply for that grant?
It's just, he and I have been working up two scenarios on how we could use the money that's already set aside for twenty-twenty-six for the roads. And we want to get counsel, you know, obviously, get your opinions on it before we move forward.
Should we do December second, can people do it?
I can.
I, I would be fine with it.
Always me. My schedule sucks every, every day, so.
Do you wanna?
Um. I would like to be there on that one because I have thoughts about people putting stuff, if we're including that in the workshop. I don't think I can make it on the second. Since I'm not in town until.
Okay.
Um, late that night.
Would we want to do a long one on the ninth and front end the truth and taxation hearing?
I think we have to front end that one, that meeting anyway though, 'cause we have the, what's that group that comes in for the truth and taxation?
Yeah, it's gonna be a long one regardless, so you're gonna have your delinquencies to.
We have, we have to come in early for that one, right?
Six fifteen is what we've talked about, truth and taxation. Or did we talk about six o'clock? Yeah, I think it was six to six-thirty and then, yeah.
So it's not terribly long, but if you want to actually front end, um, a workshop, I think you should dedicate a couple of hours to that between the roads and the parking.
I think I'd prefer to push it to January if we can.
Okay.
Okay, um, do you want to schedule that now before, before everything goes?
Yes, that would be.
Okay, that would be fabulous if we could get that. Uh, how does January sixth sound? I hate doing this without, is there anything, any legal holidays on January sixth?
No.
Don't think so.
I know, I'm all.
That would make total sense that you do.
What time were you thinking? Six, six-thirty?
Six-thirty I can get here, okay.
All right.
Six-thirty?
Thank you. So let's just keep it to the roads and the storage or whatever, yeah.
I want to add an item on Halls Marsh.
For the sixth?
Yeah.
Roads, Halls Marsh and, um, what was this, parking?
Parking.
Roads, parking and Halls Marsh?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Not six-thirty?
Yes. Um, okay, let's go back to what we pulled out, C, which is resolution authorizing water and sewer rates. Ryan?
Um, long story short, we just passed it already, so let's just skip it.
You just didn't want to pass it in the consent agenda before, did they?
No, we can't revise fees by resolution. We're not allowed to. We just passed a ordinance revising fees, so there's no need to pass the resolution. If you want a longer explanation, I can give you one.
That's okay, thank you, Ryan. We're just gonna go with that. All right, G, acceptance of bid from Woodchuck and approval of payment in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred for tree removal in Polly's Park.
So here's my question as I read that. I mean, I love the idea that we're getting rid of those trees. Um, but I think about the storm damage that we had and all the trees that fell over and knocked the lines down. And would we be better off using that money to take those at-risk trees out? So we minimize that kind of event again.
Isn't that what Excel was doing though? Isn't that what Excel was doing?
Excel only does the ones that power lines go through, yeah. So they, they will only do the ones with power lines in them, but it's not necessarily the ones across the street or the.
So it's just, I, I just raised the question.
I don't know.
I think. It's kind of rather Peter to pay Paul, like, they all need to come down.
They do, and I mean, this is just a start. I, I'm not sure where we are on our tree budget, honestly.
I don't think we spent.
I don't think we spent the fifteen at all because.
So this would go over budget.
Steve Dean hasn't done any of it, yeah.
Already?
Correct. It would be four thousand eight hundred-ish over, 'cause I think we did fifteen thousand.
Yeah, we did do fifteen thousand.
But.
But I, I do agree, we might want to address the ones along the road. Um, not that I don't want Polly's Park to be addressed, but.
Well, this is what we have the quote for though. We don't have the quote for anything on the road.
Yeah.
I don't, I guess I would just let Excel do that. I mean, and I think we need to revisit the Excel situation, but I guess to me, if we, we run a risk there of doing work that Excel would do, I'm gonna pay them to do work they would do for free.
And the other thing, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you, but when I think back to those trees that did come down over the road, they weren't dead.
Yeah, they're all live trees.
Yeah, that's true. That was the weird thing about it.
I was moving them, they're all leaves on them.
Right, same. I just thought about that, like, oh my gosh. It's hard to predict which ones are gonna come down.
Can we, can, is that negotiable, that quote?
Wanting to do up to fifteen thousand, so we're on budget.
Yeah, say we remove fifteen thousand dollars for the trees. 'Cause that's, that's what we budgeted, right?
Yeah. I'd be okay with a fifteen thousand a tree.
We're under budgeting a lot of things this year. What do you, what's your, what's your concern?
My concern is, I think that oftentimes, tree removal companies will remove the trees if you tell them how much money you have to spend on the trees. So, like, I have fifteen thousand dollars and I need these trees removed.
How many quotes?
Can you do it or not?
We get a couple quotes.
Yeah, Birch and Woodchuck.
I mean, on the other hand, street sweeping companies will stop after they hit your budget.
Which, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm okay if we, if we do the fifteen thousand, a tree gets removed and then we have to go back and get a, a couple more later if we need to.
The thing is, is like what he was explaining to me, they come in with big equipment. So you're having them come back out the second time with this equipment, it's, it's not cost-effective, but.
I mean, we're gonna spend more on, um, we spent more last year on quite a bit. I, I'm not sure that we're above, not in the red already.
What do you mean?
As far as overall budget, as far as what we had budgeted for various things. I know we're, uh, higher on snow plowing or high, like, there were other, so I don't know that us being lower on like the road budget and things like that was offset to the point of where we have extra money.
Well, I'd like to take trees down.
I would, I agree.
Any tree down is good, I was just raising, should we, should we?
Focus on the others.
And if I may, since it is winter, it's a great time to take trees down.
Yes, it is.
And so this bid is about twenty grand. And so if you had to winnow it down, I think I would ask Woodchuck to present another bid and see just how much of that needs to be done with the crane truck, with the big equipment, 'cause your mobile fees are gonna be substantial. And so if you can get that out of the way and do some of the other stuff with just climbers or, you know, other equipment without having to bring in big equipment, if you are gonna split hairs, that's the way I'd split it, if you're price-sensitive. I would just do the whole thing, it's only another four thousand dollars.
Done, I mean.
I'm just saying, if you have to do it again and they miss one, it's gonna cost a fortune to bring in that truck for just a couple of trees. So you're getting thirty-six of them done, so.
I was gonna add more to this. I was gonna ask you guys for a cap, if we could cap it out at like twenty-one thousand and then have the, there's two huge ones on Wildwood, um, what is that, Ryan? Wildwood Park there?
Oh, there's, yeah, Wildwood.
Those need to come down.
Really probably needs to be addressed.
Right, so actually, I was gonna ask for more than this and have those two added.
The one that's in that is, is really bad too, and I'm, I'm surprised that Excel hasn't taken that.
They're so backed up on tree removal though that they're super slow, like unless the tree is.
Can we just have Woodchuck come out and like cut a bunch of them right into the power line, so Excel takes?
Can you, can we, can you just like, someone make a motion to have, don't spend more than this? So we can move on some tree removal? I don't want to push this out another month.
What motion you want, Jen?
Just give me a cap, whatever you guys think is reasonable and I'll go back and talk to him about it.
Honestly, I'm fine with going a little over budget on this. So I would be, what is the, what is the amount there?
This is nineteen-eight.
I moved to, I'm fine with nineteen-eight. Anybody want to make sure we stick to budget? I'm not that worried about, our budgets look fine.
And for twenty grand, if they're here, we could ask them to throw a couple of trees in.
Right, and, and I, I definitely want them to take those Wildwood down, Wildwood trees down too. Um, here's what the, the quote says, in case anybody's listening. Tree removal project at Polly's Park will need smaller unmarked diseased trees removed beforehand, which is the small is like anybody can drop them, even me, um.
I'll come out with a chainsaw sometime if somebody wants to help me a little bit.
Price?
I'll do it, I will, at this time of year is great. Like, if somebody wants to do some smaller stuff, fine.
I'll do it.
Like bigger, sure.
I like it.
Like, give me, give me a weekend warning, we'll do it.
Okay, okay. Price includes chip brush, haul logs and cut stumps low as possible. Remove large piles of brush and logs stacked along access path to park. Um, remove thirty-six marked diseased and potentially hazardous green ash in Polly's Park using crane trucks set up in park area past brush log piles. And those piles are remo, oh, it's a, whatever, doesn't even charge for that. So thirty-six trees for twenty thousand, or nineteen-eight.
They're saying that there's thirty-six trees in Polly's Park that require the crane?
No, that's a total removal.
Oh, that's a total, okay, that makes for.
That's what I'm saying, it might be a lot different bid if you just say, what do you need the crane truck for?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
'Cause that's where a lot of that charge is gonna come in.
There's only like two of them in Twin Cities anyway, they always, they all rent them out.
Can we authorize, so if we authorize twenty thousand dollars for?
And I'll negotiate to get the biggest bang for our buck?
For, for Jen to use at her discretion for tree removal, would that be okay?
I'd, I'd second that, I guess.
Yeah, I don't.
All right, so I move to authorize up to twenty thousand dollars, um, for tree removal to be dispensed or to be authorized at the mayor's discretion.
Um, the mayor along with the acting city administrator's discretion. Mayor does not act unilaterally on anything.
Well, I mean, I think what, okay, fine, I make it.
Seriously.
Can you amend the motion to, I amend the motion to say whatever Jen said?
I got it.
All right, thanks, thanks.
All right, thank you, guys. I just want to get moving on this, 'cause I know a lot of us want some dead trees down and we didn't do any. I mean, Jim and Ron have been working, but, um, I think they've taken down maybe between ten and fifteen.
Just a lot for two people.
Yeah, that's pretty good for two people.
Let's get them voted before minds change.
Okay, let's, oh, I'll, uh, okay, any more discussion?
Could we get a second?
I thought you did.
Oh, there wasn't a second? Bridget second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thanks, Ryan. Um, oh, what was the next one?
Al.
Al, um, I'm sort of a grinch on this. I love this paid leave program, I'm so glad it's gonna be implemented in Minnesota, but I don't think that we need to pay the full premium. I think that we should do it like I think everybody else is doing and have the employee pay their portion and. I think that we should do it like I think everybody else is doing, and have the employee pay their portion and the, um, city pay its portion.
Is that how, how it's generally being done?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I would do it the way it's generally being done.
There was some, can you tell, tell them why we thought...
I would simply offer that the, the increment is so small, it's really not worth it, just because there's such a small bench in Birchwood, so it really amounted, like, a couple hundred dollars.
It was like three hundred dollars, and the coining work isn't... It's much more difficult if we split it. Did you have discussions with Marcia on that?
Yeah, we, we all did, basically, in the office, so, that's why the recommendation is just to cover it, because, again, it's just such a small number.
Three hundred a year?
Yeah. I mean, literally, it's that, it's, I'm not gonna say it's peanuts, because to some people, that's a lot of money, but, um, for the administration of it, just to parse that out, it's just not worth it.
I was wrong. It's four thirty-six total?
For the year?
Well, small business is eight seventy-two ninety-seven, employee fifty-fifty, is that right? Alan, make sure I'm reading this correctly.
It's that much per employee?
So, it's currently the city of Birchwood, Birchwood Village has eight employees in the previous five quarters. The city is classified as a small business, meaning the premiums would be due at the sixty-six percent rate.
We count as employees, if you're wondering how that works.
Oh, we pay in, we pay into this, even though we don't qualify for get...
Council members pay into it?
Everybody pays in.
So, if we wanted to request our tax money back, we're welcome to do that for our, what is it, like, thirty-three cents or whatever?
Let's see, I'm just trying to read through this notes, to make sure I'm not stating it...
But is, is that per month, per year, that's total per year, is four something?
So, she put township, but I'm pretty sure she means the city. If the city pays a hundred percent, it would cost us eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. If the city pays fifty and lets the employee pay fifty, we're talking four thirty-six. So, yeah, it's gonna cost us an extra four thirty-six if we just pay a hundred percent.
Per employee?
Total.
Total.
Oh, total?
Four hundred and thirty-six dollars total. If we pay a hundred and two checks.
That's on the basis of a hundred and thirty, we'll say a hundred and thirty-two thousand, and gross.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So, it's really not that much.
I think time saved is...
Yeah, if it's time saved, that's fine.
Yeah.
I wasn't in, on that entire discussion with Marcia, but she was mentioning the accounting end of it. If we do a hundred percent, it's way easier, I don't know. Do you remember any details on that?
What was the detail part?
What Marcia was talking about, um, the accounting end of it.
Well, simply that it's the drudgery of having to keep those things separate, and so, what you lose in efficiency you might gain, but, uh, it's kind of a wash.
I take my question back. You don't need to be a grinch.
Well, someone can move it then as it is.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who got credit for the motion?
Kathy.
Kathy.
And the second?
I, Hankins. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Countess Ryan Senior, how do we differentiate?
Hankins is fine.
And the last one...
I don't, I don't think I've earned seniority yet.
Got two years on it.
Our balance sheet. Do we have any idea where we're gonna end up by the end of the year? I, I can't figure it out, I mean, I'm looking at these numbers, they make no sense to me.
Bridgette, I am so glad you said that.
It's just like, what's gonna happen?
That's what I tell my husband all the time, I'm like, you know, I, I'm not, I don't think I'm an idiot, but man, I just look at this stuff and say, I don't know. And I think what makes it difficult is that, um, a lot of our expenses are seasonal. So, um, like, when we come up to, we can't really plan. I mean, we can assume, based on history, what the year's gonna end up like. But we can't really have a final figure on anything.
Like I told you before, like, I feel like I need the T-account.
I guess one of the things...
I need the...
One of the things I've thought for a while, and I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I think if you plotted our, our fund balances year after year, even though we budget for what we think we are, I think we gradually are increasing the amount of funds we have in the bank. So, I think we generally underspend our budgets. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but it sure looks that way.
Well, part of that is that we had money set aside for things like the lift station that is, was banked, per se. But, yeah, overall, I think we still have...
We, we kept money in the bank, whatever we call it.
And then interest on that.
A little higher because we wanted to, we were concerned that, for example, the lift station grant could go away. So, we wanted to, um, it, it might be worth just, I hate to commit to it, because I'm just, um, it might be worth just doing a couple plots, but last time I promised that I didn't manage, so, um...
But could Marcia come and talk to us or provide...
Agreed, yeah, absolutely, that seems, that seems really smart.
An overview of what it is she's seen. Plus, we're straightlining the budget rather than putting costs in the months that we think that they're going to occur.
That's true.
Which then can come back and bite us.
That's true.
I don't know, this budget, I look at it every time, it's like, I don't know.
It, I think, it, it does seem to me like having Marcia come in and just giving us a, having you ask her questions with everybody here so we can all hear and understand, it sounds like a really good idea to me.
Is she coming to our...
Even a workshop?
Yeah, and then as a general practice, every month for her to have her sort of editorial on what she's seen compared to last year, compared to...
We used to just get some treasurer's notes every month. Mary Cahill did a great job at that.
That's pretty typical, to see more of a, of a year-to-date snapshot. At least, that's what I'm used to seeing, just because, how do you know where you're going if you don't know where you are?
You don't.
If you want, I can have her come in in December, it's a good time to actually have that discussion.
Well, we have the, the meeting anyway for...
Yeah, truth in taxation, anyway.
It'd be good to have her here for that if, at all possible.
Yeah, it'd be good.
Our next council meeting?
Yeah, because we have to approve the budget in December.
Okay.
But like, if we're way under this year, then doesn't that impact our budget for next year?
I would think it would, but I don't know if we are way under, that's why I'm wondering, yeah.
I don't know for sure, I don't know that we're way under, it just feels to me like, I mean, having read the budgets for a number of years, the city budgets, the amount in the accounts would max out at six hundred, and then it would max out at seven hundred, now we're up over one point one, one point two million, and that may not, may partly just be because our budgets are going up, but it definitely seems like we budget for what we expect to spend, and yet the money in the account keeps going up, which...
Going with interest to do, yeah.
No, it should, it should tend to stay even, right? If you budget for savings, you should have savings in the amount you budgeted, but...
Well, I mean, we do have it in investments, though, too, so I would hope that they are doing well enough to get us some interest, but yeah.
We get three, three percent interest, and that, you know, that's thirty grand a year, so that's something.
Well, let's start by having Marcia come in next month, I think that would be great.
Alan, would you be able to invite her?
Yeah, I think she'll be here anyway, but I'll ask her to at least have her, uh, be prepared for us.
Thank you for bringing that up. Because I thought I was the only one that, when I look at some of these things, I'm just like, mm, I just don't really know.
I had done that, um, where you go into the office and then sit with the accountant and goes through them, and even after that, I was like, still, I'm not quite sure, but it looks lovely.
I mean, the numbers look good, I don't see anything, you know...
Nothing's in the red, not the important part.
That's what I keep looking at, I'm like, that bottom line looks really good to me, so, mm.
The checks were bouncing, but it wasn't the budget.
Okay, Ryan. Is there anything else? All right, so our December ninth city council meeting, uh, amonto announcements will feature the truth in taxation hearing as well as a public hearing regarding...
Madam Mayor.
Delinquent utility bills?
Before you get that far, should we approve the balance sheet? That was the ask under M.
Oh.
Sorry, we pulled it out.
I move to approve the balance sheet and the dispersment, and the dispersments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Okay. Announcements. As I was saying, the December ninth city council meeting will feature the truth in taxation hearing as well as a public hearing regarding delinquent utility bills and certifications.
What is that, that second one? Public hearing regarding delinquent utility bills and...
So, that's when, um, what is the group that comes in? I don't know what the tax, was it Washington County?
That's not this.
This is, um, actually, water bills.
Yeah, it's just for delinquent water bills, utility bills, so...
Sorry, I was thinking it was...
Hearing goes on, and then it goes to, gets reported to the county, and then it gets assessed to the taxes.
The letters have already gone out to residents who are past due on their water bills. So, they've had notice, so they get a time period to either pay or come in.
Dispute, basically.
And dispute it, and then after that, it goes to the county for collections.
So, it requires a public hearing.
The truth in taxation one is the one where the gentlemen come in and talk about people's taxes and people have complained about, as far as their values of the...
Number two, the city may have a short special meeting to approve the hire of another administrative support person prior to the December's meeting and discuss... Okay, so, we still might have to have a meeting, um, interviewing is beginning next week.
Yep. That's, um, Tuesday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I think Tuesday, I don't know, there's at least two of them that are scheduled for Tuesday, I don't know how many total there are, but, uh...
For Monday and Wednesday.
With any luck at all, we'll have someone surface by the end of next week. So, might require a special meeting just to approve the hire.
Just, I don't know if we've talked about the surfeit, was it a meeting that I, yeah, you guys approved Teresa's sister? That was when I wasn't here.
Correct.
That's working out really well.
Would this be a replacement for that? Oh, okay.
She doesn't want to work.
Well, that makes sense.
Regular, just a sub.
Yes, I was gonna say, she was, uh, doing us a favor of sorts.
Yeah, she liked it. So, the newsletter submissions is the nineteenth?
That would be lovely, thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah, and then the power outage, um, on November twentieth. It's a larger scope than just Birchwood Lane and Wildwood. I think it's gonna be Birchwood Avenue.
Yeah, city hall's closed, because it's gonna be out of power.
So, we'll have to see how that goes.
Do we have any residents along there that, um, because it is winter? Where are they going to go if it gets too cold? If the power is out here?
I'll take the ten day.
Well, I don't know, but it's only from, it's supposed to be nine to one.
Shall I check the weather report? It looks to me like that tree down there will probably not take four hours, it'd probably take...
It'll take the morning, but...
Yeah, I, I expect, I mean, we can refer people to the library or something, it seems to me like...
I don't think it's supposed to be frigidly cold yet.
Forty, I was gonna say forty, forty-five. I would think that Excel sends out something that says your power's gonna be out too.
You can send people to my house and I'll start a fire.
Okay.
Well, have a tree to burn.
All right. Um, number five is, uh, city staff evaluations are going to be completed within the next month. And the city hall will be closed for Thanksgiving. I do want to, um, read this nice little thank you note, if you would let me, um, I just got it tonight from Alan Mitchell. So, city of Birchwood Village, please accept this donation toward the new netting being installed on the hockey rink at Tig Schmidt's. This enhancement will help prevent pucks from flying over the boards and potentially hitting walkers, cars, and garages. Most of all, the skaters will benefit the most, it will, um, and will appreciate not having to search the street for lost pucks. Thank you for all you do, and that's from Jerry and Jackie Carlson at four oh nine Lake. And then they included a donation for the netting.
Thank you.
It was very nice. Is there anything else anybody would like to announce?
I was hoping to have the date of the holiday party, um, but we're having our meeting on Monday, so I'll have it later for a email at some point for the December children's and/or other party.
I also have worked up a, um, an order form for Birchwood Gear. So, maybe when I get it just right, I've been pricing it and things, I'll send it out to you guys, and maybe we can include it in the newsletter? Okay, I want to get everybody's opinion before I do that, and then, um...
Have a display at the holiday...
You sure?
Yeah, that'd be good. Have a display what?
At the holiday party.
If you can turn around orders quick enough, where you can...
I'm not ordering anything until we get the, like...
No, no, I mean, as far as, like, the...
The samples, I can take pictures and post them.
If we have samples at the holiday party and someone wants it for a gift...
Oh, I see.
Depending on how quickly you can turn that around.
I can try.
I don't know when the date is, it might be really soon, I...
I'll see what I can do. I think that was it, though. Anything else? Are we done?
To adjourn.
Oh. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Once again, it's lovely to work with you.